Could please take our seats. Good evening, everyone. We're going to have the invocation this evening given to us by Pastor Josh Goodrum of Miracle Temple in Rivertale. It'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand with me.
Father, we come to you humbly swear, we know how. Tonight, God, we ask you to come in the midst of this meeting, Lord God, for you said the heart of the King is in the hand of God. And, God, we thank you for our opportunity to stand before you to handle the business of this community. God, give them wisdom and understanding of this community, Lord God, and we will bless your holy name, God. Bless the leaders, Lord God. Bless the heads of this community that they'll be able to make wise decisions, wise counsel. In your name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Coming from somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, we will now move into the agenda. We do have one item that is being asked to be removed. That's item number six, subsection six, which is the RFP PKG number 11 dash 43 Sports Photography Services for Clayton County Parks and Recreation Annual Contract Second Amendment Request for Additional Services. If we can, with that amendment, if we can have an adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the noted changes.
Sarah Suckin.
Second.
Probably moving to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
Now have approval of the minutes, the November 4th, 2014 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the November 4th, 2014 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Sarah Suckin.
Second.
Probably moving to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we have one individual that is listed for public comment. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county residence for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
I'm probably pronouncing this wrong, but Dante House. Please come forward, sir.
How you doing? All right, my name is Dante House. I'm here on behalf of my business that I just started in Clayton County. I'm asking for a waiver because when I opened up my business, I went and did all of my proper vapor work to get everything started, and all of my information got approved. And a month later, they said that I couldn't wash cars outside in Clayton County, and I wasn't knowledgeable of that. And I done borrowed money, spent all type of money putting into the business, and now they telling me that I can't do it. So, I got people that I have to pay back from all of the money I done put into it to get the place going, and now I'm just stuck.
Okay, sir. We have to get a better understanding of your situation, so what I'm gonna ask you to do is to speak with Chief Operating Officer Alex Kohelis. I don't see him, but... Okay, when he gets back, get with him, get his information, and be in contact with him.
Okay, thank you.
He'll advise us how to go forward from there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now consider request of Ramona Thurman, interim purchasing agent of Central Services.
Please take them together.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have 11 items for your consideration this evening. The first item is a request to sell county surplus items. Central Services would like to obtain the necessary approval from the Board of Commissioners to dispose of county assets by utilizing our contract govdeals.com, and we have the list of items. The next item is an RFQ for ground ladder testing and aerial device examinations, request for informal written quote approval. This request is for ground ladder testing and aerial device examinations as requested by the Fire Chief Director of Emergency Management. The chief's recommendation is to award a service contract with Fire One Incorporated. Funding is available through the fire department's funds. The next item is an RFQ for professional DJ services. This request is requested by the Director of Senior Services. The recommendation is to award a service contract at the hourly rate of $75 per hour to Mitchell Crumley DJ Soul For Real Services LLC. Funding is available through the senior services funds. I request your approval of the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. The next item is purchase of vehicles for Clayton County Police Department. This purchase request is for two 2014 Dodge Charger Pursuit Vehicles. The chief of police recommendation is to approve this purchase in the amount of $47,806.50 by utilizing the state contract with Aitkins Ford Jeep. Funding is available through the county's vehicle replacement funds. I request you approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. Resolution number 2012-95, 2004 SPOS Consultant Design Services, Right-of-Way Services, and Optional CEI Services for the Widening and Reconstruction of Godby Road Change Order Request, Second Contract Amendment. The Director of Transportation and Development recommends amending the contract with AMEC E&amp;I Incorporated. The amendment is for environmental services in the amount of $4,870. The original contract was approved by the Board of Commissioners on May 8th, 2012. Funding is available through the 2004 SPOS funds. I request you approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. The next item is SPOS Construction Management at Risk Services for the construction of the multipurpose fire training building, Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment. This project was approved by the Board of Commissioners on October 1, 2013, and awarded to Potts Construction LLC. This change order request is to establish the guaranteed maximum price for this project in the amount of $4,128,796. This cost of construction is within the budgetary allowance established for the project. I request your approved recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. Clayton County Ball Field Renovations Annual Contract First Amendment Request for Additional Services. The director's recommendation is to amend the current contract with Benson Construction Company Incorporated to add the installation of a booster pump at the Lovejoy Soccer Park at a cost of $7,200. Funding is available through the 2009 SPOS funds. I request you approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. Clayton County Tree Services Annual Contract. This bid is for Clayton County Tree Services, which covers an indefinite quantity of tree services, and will be used by departments countywide. Central Services has reviewed all bids, and the recommendation is to issue a contract to Computer Buzz Incorporated. This recommendation is based upon the lowest response of bidders that meet the specifications. I request you approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. The next item is a request to renew the county's public entity access liability insurance coverage for the period of December 31, 2014 through December 31, 2015, and to grant approval for the chief financial officer to amend the budget as necessary. This coverage will provide coverage for claims against the county alleging bodily injury, property damage, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, errors and omissions, employment practices liability, and employee benefits liability. The recommendation is to continue coverage with the current carrier, Star Indemnity and Liability Company, at the amount of $459,600, say 2% reduction in the premium from last year, which is a savings of $11,742 to the county. Next is a request to renew the county's property and boiler and machinery insurance coverage for the period of January 1, 2015 through January 1, 2016, and to grant approval for the chief financial officer to amend the budget as necessary. This insurance provides coverage on county-owned and leased buildings, their contents, garaged owned and leased vehicles, and equipment. The recommendation is to purchase this coverage through Travers at the renewal rate of $203,777. This is a 1.3% reduction in the premium from last year's amount, which is a savings of $2,671 to the county. The final request is to renew the county's aviation insurance coverage through aircraft, I'm sorry, including aircraft, airport owners heliport and associated liability coverage for the period January 1, 2015 to January 1, 2016, and to grant approval to the chief financial officer to amend the budget as necessary. This will provide coverage for Clayton County's pilots, helipad, aircraft, and associated liabilities. The recommendation is to continue coverage with the current carrier, Ace Property and Casualty Insurance Company, with the same premium of $37,438.
Do I have a motion?
Same move.
Is there a second? No, second, properly moved, a second. Are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
The next items the board will consider are requests of Ramona Thurman, Chief Financial Officer.
I have eight items.
Take them together, please.
Thank you. I have eight items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment 2-82 is for Clayton County Board of Commissioners Medical Self Insurance. This is to provide funds in the amount of $3,016,777 for additional performance bond expense, claims expense, paying agent fees, and to transfer funds to the workers' compensation fund. Budget Amendment 2-83 is for workers' compensation self-insurance to transfer funds in the amount of $1,500,000 from the medical self-insurance fund to provide for additional workers' compensation claims. Budget Amendment 2-10 is for economic development, to amend in $1,500, which is a donation received from Central Georgia EMC. Budget Amendment 2-11 is for the sheriff's office, to amend an additional revenue in the amount of $101,576, which was received from the Department of Justice for the State Criminal Alien Program. Budget Amendment 4-52 is for 2004 SPOS, to amend in, to amend the budget in the amount of $187,192 for construction modifications on the Clark Howard Highway realignment project. Budget Amendment 4-53 is for 2004 SPOS, to amend the budget in the amount of $4,870 for Environmental Services Consultant AMEC on the Godby Road Widening Project. Budget Amendment 4-55 is for 2009 SPOS, to amend the budget in the amount of $282,240 for funding for Lake Ridge Parkway Sidewalk Installation, RFB number 14-49, was approved by the Board of Commissioners during the regular business meeting on November 4th, 2014. The last item is a request for release of demolition bond in the amount of $500 to Pace's Contract and Services in Stockbridge, Georgia. This is for releasing a demolition bond posted to clean up the lot at the property located at 6146 Field Crest Drive in Morrow, Georgia.
All right, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Any questions on any of the items?
I have a quick question. Thank you. I know it's a cleanup item, but Ms. Thurman, the very first item for the medical self-insurance, just an explanation of the paying agent fees, who do those fees go to?
Just a moment. Those are for the cause or payments, the insurance, the agents that pay the fees to the providers, medical providers.
So, we contract with them for basically a 10% commission to pay themselves?
I don't know the exact amount. I would have to get that information from Ms. Bright.
It's $300,259 of the 3 million.
That may not be the total cost, that may be the additional amount needed to cure that line item. It may be more than that.
If you could get that for me, I'd like to understand it better.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
The board will consider request of Renee Bright, Human Resources Director.
Take them both together, please.
I have two items tonight. They're both from Fire and Emergency Services. The first request is to delete a vacant fire captain position, which is a pay grade 28, and create an emergency services communications officer at a pay grade 28. The next is a request to delete a vacant systems analyst position at a pay grade 21, and create an emergency management training and exercise officer at a pay grade 21. There wouldn't be no financial impact for either one of these requests.
So, motion.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, the board will now hear and consider the request of Kristy Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Please take them together.
Good evening. First is ordinance number 2014-286, which is for a second read and adoption, and is an ordinance adopted under the home rule power specifically granted to the governing authority of Clayton County pursuant to Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1B1 of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of 1983, amending the local act of the General Assembly creating and composing the Clayton County Board of Commissioners and setting forth the general provisions governing Clayton County government to amend the Clayton County Code of Ordinances as amended, specifically Part 1, Article 2, Section 2 dash 22 audits generally, to provide severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. Ordinance number 2014-288 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part 2, Chapter 70 Personnel, by deleting the existing Article 2 Code of Ethics and substituting in lieu thereof a new Article 2 Code of Ethics, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014, excuse me, 2014-299 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Public Defender Standards Council, providing for the delivery of indigent defense services under the Georgia Indigent Defense Act for fiscal year 2015, to authorize the chairman to execute the memorandum of understanding and to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-300 is a resolution amending the Clayton County Emergency Operations Plan by adding NXI, Clayton County Continuity of Government Operations Plan, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-301 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement, providing for the terms and conditions under which Doyle Baseball Incorporated will sponsor and host two coaching clinics at Flat Shoals Park and Panhandle Park, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-302 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to apply for, and if awarded, accept a 2014 Georgia Recreational Trails Program grant administered by the State Department of Natural Resources for the development of a trail project, to authorize the chairman or his designate to execute any documents and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the grant agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-303 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept the donation of a portable trailer unit from the Clayton County Board of Education for use by the Clayton County Police Department, to authorize the chairman to accept the donation on behalf of Clayton County, to execute any documents necessary and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-304 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to exercise its powers of eminent domain in accordance with provisions of Georgia laws for the purpose of acquiring certain properties for use by the Clayton County Department of Transportation and Development for the Godby Road Widening Improvement Project, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating thereto, and otherwise, and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-305 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to apply for, and if awarded, accept the fiscal year 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Clayton County Transportation Development Department, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-306 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept a Homeland Security Equipment Grant from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $100,000 with no matching county funds to purchase explosive ordinance demolition equipment, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-307 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Rivertale and Jonesboro for the operation of a joint anti-drug task force, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-308 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Atlanta for the operation of a joint anti-drug task force, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-309 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into contracts with Dr. Paula Fredericks and Dr. Elizabeth Perry to provide urgent services for the Clayton County Animal Control Kennel, to authorize the chairman to execute the contract and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution number 2014-310 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a natural gas extension contract for gas service with Atlanta Gas Light Company, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement on behalf of the county and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. And Resolution number 2014-311 is a resolution by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners eliminating the pre-meetings held before each regularly scheduled business meeting to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the ordinances in the resolutions.
Is there a second? No, second. Are there any questions on any of the items?
I have a question.
Ms. Evans.
Ms. Barnes, the very first ordinance, catch 286, I'm fully supportive of annual audits, complete audits, and separate audits for each department and agency. Looking for some clarity, under the new Section 2 dash 22, Section B, where it describes which separate audits, such all authorities created by the Board of Commissioners are herein required to provide annual audited financial reports prepared by a certified public accountant. I'm trying to get my head around all authorities created by the Board of Commissioners versus those, say mandated or created by the state, the water authority, the housing authority, the hospital authority?
What state law does is that it authorizes local governing authorities to create boards or authorities, but it's this Board of Commissioners that actually creates that board or authority. So, they are off, you are authorized to create them by state law, but this board creates them.
So, we've created all of them that we appoint to?
Yes, I believe so.
Within the county, not the MARTA board, but the county ones. So, so all of the county authorities and boards would going forward have to do, provide us an annual audit?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you for that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we need an executive session for personnel and litigation.
Okay.
The final item on the agenda for this evening is the appointment to the Housing Authority Board to fill the expiring term of Ms. Tanya Clark. This is a five-year term that would expire December 1st, 2019, and this is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations tonight?
Chair, I'll offer a motion to reappoint Dr. Tanya Clark to the Housing Authority Board.
A second?
Properly moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Three, two. Rooks and Turner, opposed.
That concludes the agenda. We did have a request for an executive session for litigation and personnel.
So, motion to go into executive session.
Same move.
No, second, properly moved and second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, motion to reconvene.
Same move.
No, second, properly moved and second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Ms. Bright?
Yes, I am requesting permission or authority to fill a work release coordinator position in the sheriff's office as an overage, and this is due to the employee being reinstated by the Civil Service Board.
So, motion.
So, move.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have Resolution number 2014-312, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a settlement agreement settling all claims set forth in the matters involving Thomas Parks, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the settlement agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes.
So, motion. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
And finally, Resolution number 2014-313, which is a resolution authorizing the county to enter into a mutual agreement and release with Arrell Anderson, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes.
So, motion. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second, any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Uh, Commissioners Gregory and Hambrick, opposed, pass, that's three, two.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, motion to adjourn?
Same move.
Uh, second, properly moved and second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.